We're gonna open this workshop tonight. And hopefully, everybody has a copy of what's going on. Any city park position update?
The plan right now... What the recommendation is to the council for next Monday's consideration is that the position closes tomorrow as far as applicants. And their offer is that myself, the mayor, and Tom, who go through the applicant screening, select a pool of candidates which we're doing the initial interview of. Come back to the council probably, I like to say October 6th, but that's a little aggressive based on schedules and other stuff. And three minimum following you. And then have a short list of candidates which then the council as a whole may choose to interview them at the board. Now, if you do anything you want, I'll do anything you want, but that was one recommendation. But it won't be open for discussion, what the board would like to do with it?
Well, I personally was thinking, maybe let the... I won't be in the initial opening of them, and I'll let two board members sit in with you and Tom, and let them go through the first phase. Is that alright?
Yeah, that's fine. I just didn't see a purpose having interviews with the full board in your initial phase. I don't know about that, I just didn't see.
Did we get any considerable amount of...
I haven't counted, but there's a few. There's a few. Like I haven't counted, but four were filled up, I can tell you that.
Okay, good. Okay. I guess everybody looked at their packet, we have a... We only have one bid for salt. Everybody else, everybody else, do what? Which one did I skip? Okay, excuse me, is that on here?
Yeah.
The Mississippi River Eagles from Crystal City would like to have a permit to solicit. They want to solicit on Z Highway in front of Burger King and in front of McDonald's. And that's for October 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And their goal is to raise funds for their Christmas basket program. They help needy families. I personally am a member of the Eagles. This is actually put on by the auxiliary, but I can tell you that they have a really good program down there. They have food baskets, but they also have a Christmas party for kids that they come in, get new gifts for anywhere from their parents or another sibling. And then the members of the Eagles wrap farm and the whole works. So the funds are put to good use. I guess we'll wait until Monday night to vote on it, but that's what the Eagles are wanting.
Does that benefit our community too here in the...
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Glad to see somebody filed out a forms to do this. I don't know historically what the trend was, what procedures was for this, that may have been somebody delegated and authorized to sign these. But when I looked at it, it was obvious I didn't have the authority to sign it. And it hasn't been delegated to me to sign these. It's really, at the bottom, it says mayor and board. That's the reason they came to you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Any other question guys, or ladies?
So sir, should that be put on the agenda for Monday?
Yes, it should be on Monday's agenda. Okay, now I guess we'll go to salt.
We're speaking to the same four companies that we have always done historically here. Two of them didn't have any salt available, and one of them has not taken new customers. Now with Car Guild, who have always ordered salt farm at least the last two, three years, they, because we're a customer already, they're willing to keep us as a customer. Price went up a lot, almost doubled, because of the shortage of salt this year. They, in the past, they've had a minimum amount, they no longer have that, but they also don't guarantee us the full amount we're ordering. So it's a catch-22. We don't have to buy so much, but then they may not be able to give us so much. And so the only choice we have, they're the only bid we got for salt. And that's where it lies.
So this amount is almost double of what last year's was?
Last year was about $55, give or take, and this year it's almost $97 per ton.
The end of the season, last season, it was going for $240 a ton.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Because we bought...
Do you know if we used to buy our salt?
We have some, we have some reserve, we do reserve. There's some, if we have another bad winter, it's not near enough. Now, we won't buy the full 400 ton at one time, we'll buy it. Initially, I would recommend that we buy quite a bit. We may not be there at the end of the year, maybe at a premium price.
So would there be any objection to me trying to make a couple of my contacts to see what's available?
Well, I think if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have to put it back out for bid for everybody, even though...
So this one out for bid, or this is just who we're dealing with because nobody...
No, I was actually, I emailed it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I won't spread the depressing news if I get it. But I might have extra salt if you need it later on if you hear of it.
Right. Okay. I guess everybody got to see the eye-opening bids on this wastewater pump replacement. This is for a water station up at Tierra. And I guess by reading what Wade put, I guess we'll let Dickie give us the depressing news about this, but he spent $11,000 plus dollars on a pump.
Well, I got some good news to start with, that we buy the original replacement pump, that's $21,000.
Yep.
So we have to, let's look at something different. And the pump that's presently in there is not rebuildable. They're really not made, the lower hearing, the stock made to be rebuilt. Next it can be, but it's about the same price as this new pump. From a different brand. If you look at this data for the folks out there, this pump is designed for approximately, I'm not gonna use easy numbers, about 200 gallons a minute, that's why it's designed to pump. Right now, it's pumping 75 gallons a minute. That's about 38% efficient. Now, when you look at those numbers and you think about the energy use associated with that, it just makes sense to replace the pump. It is pricing, we're looking at approximately $11,200, maybe some shipping in there, but it's gonna be replaced one way or another. Either we rebuild the old one, buy this one, at the...
People down at the bottom of the street here, that pumping station, if it quits, they're in trouble.
Where we have one pump, that wouldn't be enough to keep up the max flow. And that will be on the agenda from Monday.
It seems to me that that, I don't know, was it a pump or something replaced over at Tierra last year? Maybe not this, but I don't remember.
Well, this pump was replaced in 2006. So...
Maybe it was someplace else.
I think that was a water pump.
Yeah, could've been.
There was a water pump. Is this pump rebuildable, what we're gonna possibly purchase here?
It's rebuildable, but the bottom end of it is just shot, the whole thing...
No, no, I can misunderstand.
Yes, they are.
The one that we're going to purchase is in a rebuildable pump, or is it at the bottom end, it's just crashing hard?
From what I was told by Wade, and I haven't seen the problem, I haven't seen the ledger, he said, "These are rebuildable." And I'm not sure we have the expertise and house to do it, and we had to, we tried it out.
Right.
And I'll confirm that with Wade, I'll talk to Wade tomorrow and confirm that.
Yeah, let's, I mean, but this, you know, disposables not gonna work. Let's protect our investment.
So it's a four-week delivery, too, is that right?
Yep.
I think I'd get that thing taken by next week for that money.
You could drive it, yeah.
Just 12 grand, I mean, I think I'd get it taken quicker.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, Corin? I suppose that this is all inside the budget though of our replacement fund and stuff like that.
So what's the next one?
Yeah, let's get into something we really don't know nothing about. The voice pro contract renewed.
This is the voicemail for the City Hall complex. It's how all of our voicemail addresses, including the police department. It's a renewed, we just renewed it, it's not a new contract, so it doesn't part of the order between, we had to simply vote. But unfortunately, this year, we really didn't have the time to look at any other options. It's due very quickly, and we got this, I don't know when we got it, but Amber's the one who came across it, and we had this little short window of time to respond. And I apologize for that, but to go out to bids, we will be at the end of this contract and may not have voicemail.
Okay, does, is this quite a bit higher than what last year's was?
Same price.
Oh, the same price, okay. Okay.
So this figure is the year for the whole year?
So the invoice date...
Yes, it's for the whole year.
I got a confirmation.
Is invoice date of 7/15, is that when we originally received this? Or that's when they shipped it out to us?
I don't know.
I'm not sure when they shipped it out to us. They came to my desk about a week and a half ago. It was right after the last meeting, and unfortunately, the contract's up on the 29th.
Correct.
So I'm not sure when we originally got it, I don't know who originally got it. I just know it came to me and they had to do something with that.
Okay. This T1 line, the header for City Hall and Police Department. The biggest thing I know is that price is on a monthly basis going from 500 something to 1,500?
Yeah, 1,603.
And it was 572?
Yeah.
So how, how do they justify all this?
Well, first of all, we're not comparing apples to apples. The 572 was the original data line to this building. It was really designed for very little data and phones. Every time somebody's on the phone, it takes away from the computer's bandwidth. Right now, that's only 0.1, 0.5. So when more people on the phone, the smaller its bandwidth is for that. And when we're rolling out this new software for this accounting software, and that's a $60,000 software package we're rolling out, and we may not be able to use that software package with the current 0.5. So this will bump us up to 3.5 or 3.0 with a guaranteed 1.5 megabyte of bandwidth just for data. And there's a price increase. We did look at Charter. Charter was $2,400 a month, plus $30,000 installation fee. Now, that would've been fiber. But we looked at Charter, and now Amber and I talked about it, we thought at this point in time, maybe better just to stay with wind, with wind stream, and renew the contract at this rate, and then figure it out. Is that one year? That's one year.
And another thing is that the contract that we're in now isn't out until July 8th of 2015. So if we were to go out for bids for another company, we would still be paying the 573 plus the new price of Charter, whoever else we would go to for the new bids.
Yeah, we go July and so forth.
Yeah, 2015. So whereas going with this option, we're still getting a better service, but it's only adding on three more months, four more months.
So we're not actually gonna start a new contract?
Yeah, and well, it'll start a new contract, but it'll only be for a year, so it will expire September of 2015. It won't add on another year from July 2015.
Okay. So it'll go till September, you say?
Yes.
So we can't negotiate with them to start that as July, in case we did come across something else? I mean, it's like a new customer, isn't it?
Not necessarily, since it's the same, it's everything's staying the same, it's just new data lines. I mean, I can ask them if they'll cooperate.
I would appreciate if you would ask them, because I mean, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely try, it's just it goes on a year-to-year basis, so it's one-year contract, a two-year contract, or a three-year contract.
Right. It don't hurt to ask.
Yeah, I can try and do it.
You know, and I mean, that put us into a little bit earlier negotiation of it.
This last contract started back in 2010 or what?
We've had wind stream for a while, I didn't know if it was 2010 or how, I didn't know a lot.
There's a signed contract here of 572, 33 monthly, it says old, and it says 622, 2010. So is that like when we moved into this building, or what?
I'm not sure when they did the very first contract, Holland signed with this one, and it was dated 2010. So as far as I know, that's when we started wind stream, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
I have a question regarding that.
Go ahead.
My question is, on this program, are they going to be able to store all emails going in and out, like we previously discussed, without...
We're working on that right now, all the features we want.
Right, right. So I was wondering if that's gonna be, if that's a capability they have, if that's going to be able to do them a contract price?
We're asked for, we'll double check that.
Yeah, I'll double check it, it's something that I've been working with them back and forth. And we also have Jeff from CopyPod working on it. Unfortunately, we only have half of it fixed right now, but it's in the process.
Good, all right, thank you. Okay. And then, does the Z Highway sewer line project?
That project, I don't know who originated, or who did the vocal work on it originally. But I was asked to look at that project, kind of dust it off, refresh it a little, present it to the council here for consideration. We did meet with the engineer, and he looked at his estimates again, and also he provided estimates to us, not only based on the original design, but any extensions typically going east from like firehouse back towards town. That would pick up, had the potential of picking up some of these homes kind of around, that's a firehouse there and some houses over there. And that's what Wade and I did this week. He dropped off some drawings at about 3:30 this afternoon, roof estimates, and just, the drawings haven't changed much, other than just adding the extensions going eastward. And I'm hesitant to put these drawings up because they're not accurate drawings yet. It's just lines on a piece of paper, is all it is right now, with little regard to necessary features of the property. For this reason, I'm hesitant to put them out there. Because somebody made this drew where they're taking this right across my front door, and that's not accurate. These were just lines on a drawing, like say, lines on a piece of paper. But the cost estimates are probably relatively close, probably 80, 85% accurate. And those numbers, I'll be glad to give anybody who wants those numbers, see those numbers. But that will be presented to the board on Monday, to see if they want to renew that effort, or some other direction with it, I don't know. Just asked to present it, told them, anything else?
Yes?
Can you give us those numbers tonight?
Sorry.
Pardon?
Can you give us those numbers tonight?
Sure. Want me to read them to you?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
The first original project really had two extensions, you know, kind of went and keyed off. The east group part, that went back towards the community, back towards town, that was at $65,580. The risk rate expansion of that original project was $24,871, or a total of $90,451 for the original project. If we were to extend the project even further to the east, picking up additional residents, that additional cost would be $102,656. And that would pick up an additional general estimate, perhaps 20, 25 homes, if they wanted to cap onto the system. So there would be, if they have any additional homes, that could be in their cover.
But that's running from like, as far as peaceful valleys, out of the community and the wedge out there?
It would start to come around, on this probably start to get used. Is that sheet floor?
Right.
Well, starting with floor one, through the end of the drawing, would be the new addition, trying to pick that up.
Now, that 65,580, that was, I mean, the first two on this page, that was like the original, was like phase one and phase two, am I right?
Correct, correct. Right, the 65,580 is catching the homes on the north side of Z Highway, up to somewhere around where the house sits high on the hill there.
Seven?
Huh?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the 24,871 is like the firehouse, the gas station, and down to, pretty close to that empty lot that's down at Camp Cedar Lodge Road, it's a highway.
They would request those, I know the firehouse requested it, and the, what do you call it?
Gas station.
Gas station requested that, being on that.
And then phase one, was, is this, is this diagram changed as far as, because wasn't phase one going to cut across Z Highway with the pump station, something or another there?
It will, there will be some board, and we'll put in a large casing that we need to increase sewer line size. In the future, we wouldn't have to reboard, we'd just pull the old one, stick it in with the casing, that's underneath the road. And that's pretty close to the firehouse down there where it cuts across.
That's by Dusty Road.
Right, comes off Dusty Lane. That's where the existing manhole is right now.
Okay, but my question is, is phase one, I believe, originally was gonna cross over Z up further by like Redline Welding and?
The only drawing I've ever seen, that's only been five weeks, but was at the car house.
Okay, because...
Okay, that answered my question that I needed to know from other things that I needed to investigate about, thank you. Well, I, wait just a minute, I don't believe, I think that was a misconception of myself thinking that it was going to be a line somewhere around the plumbing company going into our sanitation system. So right at the moment, it's, by my understanding, everything was, by talking to Wade, that it was gonna come off of Dusty Lane and continue...
Okay, then let's work. But since we're gonna go this far, and we're going into this discussion, and that's fine with me, then why would we have said that we were just gonna go with phase one first? And then phase two, which there's people sitting out here that are present tonight, wouldn't have been able to get on the phase one project until we got to that point, which, if we were gonna cross over at Dusty, why would you go in front of their house but not allow them to come in? That's what, you know, my understanding when it was originally spoke...
Like I said, I think that's just a misconception, because by my understanding... Okay, well, by talking to Wade, that it was gonna go underneath the Z Highway, and then, and then come eastward, which would catch all the houses along that area. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. In August of 2013, it was presented to us that you would go under Highway Z at Dusty Road and catch all of our homes, which we are east of that, and we would be able to tap on. There was no mention of anything at Redline Welding. And at that time, it had to be done within 30 days. Had to be done within 30 days, because we inquired about a tip, and they said, "There's not enough time." Well, it's been a year and how many months? There was plenty of time for a tip.
Well... I understand that a year ago, though I wasn't on the board either, so this is just a renewal of trying to get these sewer lines now, but we still have to see if we can get the financing and all the rest of it. So, go ahead, Mr. Watkins.
Thank you, since I was, he said, "Wow, oh, okay." Anyway, my understanding, when Jerry Thomas started this stuff, that wasn't supposed to cost the city a damn dime. That was, if all of them come in, it wasn't gonna be done, and that's what was said.
And we're not saying that it's gonna cost the city any money. We're saying that we're going to go out for financing for it. So you never heard one of us say that it's gonna cost us any money?
It's always supposed to be done for the financial bank, the money's supposed to be in the bank already for it.
No.
I'm just, that's what it said, from Jerry Thomas.
We were told that it was already, that they had already been given grants.
That's right.
Mr. Marcus.
I sit on the EDC fund, and we're out there, the money is sitting there right now at EDC, it's not in the bank or any other place. It's out there waiting for the people to decide what they want to do. When it first was going on, everything else, we talked about it, and the people kind of got upset because we weren't doing anything. We weren't doing anything because we did not have the money to do anything. When we got the money, then we started talking, and that's when the new board came in. So that's, if they want the money, it's out there. At the interest rate, what we had was like 1.1%, something like that.
1.5%.
What it is now, I don't know. The whole thing is, is the money's sitting there.
I gotta go, seems like we know more than they do.
Have a good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
We had been told that this was going to go through, and we were all going to, basically, we were gonna be given sewers, which we knew that wasn't quite the case, they would base their way. But after middle ground going on about it, we were told we had to become part of the city, and we had to sign a contract with the city to get this financed. I'm not signing a contract with any city, because boards change, people's votes change, everybody does what they want to do, and I'm left with no representation. Where I live, I'm not even, anybody on the board was vote, you know, I wasn't there to vote you in, or, you know, I don't even know who would take over that section. But my concern is, if this is going through, and it has to be, I want to know who my representative is, and I want to know why I have to sign a contract. If I can come up with my own finance, pay my own way, I shouldn't be involved in contracts with the city. I don't trust government, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, I gotta be honest, I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with the contract issue that you talked about. I'd love to finally know what that is.
And we didn't get any kind of breakdown, he gives a long sum of money for an area. Well, how many people are in that area, and what's that breakdown for household?
Well, this is like a beginning, this is like a beginning of the...
Well, this is, this is like a beginning, this is like a beginning of the whole project again. So we would have to canvas the neighborhood to find out who's interested, who's not interested, and, and start from the beginning.
Well, if, you know, you have, I don't know, thirteen homes in that area, you break down thirteen and then we can figure it goes higher after, you know, nobody, if, if you're not getting all of them, but I guess I can do my own counting and then I'll find out who are on the block there.
Okay.
Because we were also told that either everybody became a part of the city or nobody was going to be.
This whole thing was going to go away, everybody didn't sign on.
Everybody didn't sign on.
We're, we're trying to work something out here. No, nothing is guaranteed that, that you have to come, come into the city. There's residents out there that don't belong to the city. They pay, they pay twice the bill that residents pay, but we, this, this is a, a new project to start out and working, and working towards a, a goal of trying to get you sewers out there. That's what this is about. This is bad afford.
I just, just a couple things. I, I, I would like to offer a suggestion that I think it might be a good idea since this is to work into so many different areas that it might be a good idea for not only the non-residents, who this project is going to affect a great deal, but also for the residents of the city that they will have and make, everybody can make an educated decision on how we want to proceed with this. It, it might be a good idea to have a town hall meeting that just specifically discusses this situation so that everything can be clarified, that everybody knows exactly what we want to do. Because there have been so many different stories told, different things that have been presented. My question, I understand, Mr., you know, mine, Mr. Marcus, is that you are on the EDC board, so what you're saying is that the money is waiting there? Okay, that we have not passed anything to receive that money?
Correct.
Okay. I, I would just like, I would like to ask the board to go back and review minutes from March and April and May of two thousand fourteen before we proceed any further. And, you know, according to the documents that we originally had, that, that, I don't know if those documents were signed or they weren't signed. Okay, but the first payment is due in October of this year.
First payment of what?
Of this loan, of the purchasing agreement. So I, I mean, has it, has it been signed or has it not been signed? If you're saying that the money's waiting for us.
The money is sitting there depending on what the board wants to do. The payment is not due in October because the money's not even borrowed or anything yet.
Okay, I, I, that's what I'm saying, we need to get things clarified. Everything, I think, needs to be clarified first.
That's easy to do, you call Pat Lamping and he'll sit down and tell you what the heck's going on.
By my understanding, Mr. Lamping was here the evening that.
Yes.
That everything sort of blew up and he was, had his check, the check for the city with him, but then everything blew up and that's where he, he walked out and that's where we more or less are now trying to bring a dead project back to life. Because by my understanding, the county's going back out there now again and, and closing systems down and that, so it's.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. Okay, that's why I said it might be a good idea that we could get all of our information out there first. I mean, I understand that the money is truly waiting there for us. And we have to do an adjustment of whether the interest rate will be the same, if the term will be the same, I totally understand that. Okay, but it might be in everyone's best interest to see exactly what everyone wants to do. Okay, before we proceed with this. If, if we need the money, Mr. Marcus, you're saying the money is waiting for us if we need it, okay? But as my understanding, that there are people that do want to come into the city, there are people that do not want to come into the city, and it was stated before that these people, that you either had to annex into the city or we were not going to do the sewer line. Okay? That was the only option that was offered to the citizens out there, okay? So there are alternatives, and I think the alternatives need to be discussed and we need to find out what it is our citizenry wants to do and what the citizens out there want to do. If they don't want to come into our city, you know, that's their prerogative. But it's also our prerogative if we want to drop a sewer line out there and charge them double for what the sewer rate is because they're a non-resident. Okay, but I think all of these things need to be addressed to everyone and so that we're all knowing exactly what we're getting into before we go any further. And I make myself clear? And I would like to tell the board that I have invested my time in going not only on the phone with various departments out at the county level, I have taken time out of my day to go out there and actually speak to our representatives out there, all right? And under no circumstances legally can the city be held, we, we are not responsible. We will not be told that we have to put these people on. These people, and I'm just being, I'm laying it out there straight. This issue with their, with the septic system, with their sewer system, that is the homeowner's issue. What they choose to do with it is their prerogative. If we choose to help them out, that's fine, but not the state, not DNR, and not the county are going to come in here and tell us that we have to annex them and we have to fix our problem. And that's what we have been told in the past, that we were going to have to do that.
Well, some, somewhere, somewhere along the line, though, you have to let this board move forward to, and forget about the past because.
No, no, I'm not, I want you to move forward, I want you to move forward. But I, I want to move forward with making sure that people have the facts.
I understand that, but, but somewhere along the line, we have to be able to be with these people and we have to look at all the avenues of what it's going to cost to put the system in and then we'll decide where we're going to go from that.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm not disagreeing with you. But what I'm saying is, what I'm trying to say is that let everyone know what the facts are, let everyone know what their options are, okay? So that everyone can make an educated decision on which way they want to go. And if these people don't want to come into the city, that's fine. You know, if they want to come into the city, that's fine too. If we want to drop the system, that's fine, but let us know how that's going to be paid for. As citizens, let us know how it's going to be paid for, okay? Are we signing a contract with the people to, for them to pay so much upfront and then pay so much on their monthly bill? You know, I think these things, I think people are entitled to know these things.
I couldn't agree to more.
Okay, I'm not saying go ahead with the project. I'm not saying go, not go ahead and pursue, you know, getting the money from EDC. But, you know, we also need to know, Mr. Marcus, you're saying we got the money out there, okay?
I'm not saying we got the money, the money is out there.
The money is out there, okay? The money is out there, so let's figure out what we want to do.
The initial was roughly for two hundred and ten thousand dollars. The whole thing is when we talk about this, we're going to run the sewers out there. We're going to get the money, then call the people in, talk to them, tell them what their advantage was, everything else, because as Dickie or Ed said, the county will start condemning the houses. They cannot condemn the sewer system.
The sewer system, I think.
Sewer system.
They can condemn the houses.
Wait one minute.
They can fix their own up and everything else, but as they said, it won't last, but maybe several years and then they'll be back in the same shape again. We're going to get a pump, grinder, and container all in one unit for roughly ten thousand dollars to put into each house. And that would pump and grind and, and pump the, what do they call it, the?
Fluid into the system.
Yeah, the, the fluid.
It's an enclosed system.
Yes, and pump that in and they would pay on their bills over timeframe and everything else. Not all at one time unless they had the money, and some of the people did, so they could pay it. The EDC said do not pay all that money back to us all at one time because if you want to go out further, you've got the money sitting there so you can keep moving out and annexing property, is what we were talking about, and the others too.
Okay, Ted?
Well, I live at nineteen seventeen, Highway Z, which is about four or five houses west of, of Plumbing Company.
Right.
So, and then on several houses east of the, the firehouse. So, you know, if they, if they put a, if they put an underground thing in that area, I mean, it don't have to be there, but I'm just kind of pointing out, I need to put a pipe all the way across there. I think, I think that it's only, we, we have to pay for progress. There's probably not a house up there that will pass when they come in from Jackson County or over there to check. And I spend, I spend about a thousand dollars a year pumping my, my septic tank out. And, you know, I mean, so you gotta have, you're gonna pay either now or you're gonna pay later. And they're gonna come by and condemn my property if, if it isn't done or something. And it's going to cost ten, fifteen, twenty thousand. I'd probably have to put my pump or my septic tank way up on the hill and put a pump, you know, one up there and use my yard as a, what do you call it?
Drain field.
Drain field, because we're too close to the highway. There's not enough. So, I mean, as far as people arguing they don't want to come in and this and that, I want to come in, but if you put a pipe there and somebody doesn't want to, you just, you just got it there and then when they have to come in, they're going to have to pay eight thousand dollars to recover something.
Correct, and being in a blundering stage of this, it's, it's like the mayor said, it's all going to be regenerated. It's all going to be reworked. That's where we should be transparent with everybody. Once we find out who wants to come in, who don't want to come in, there's going to be stipulations, I'm sure would have to be put in place, that the people that don't want to come in now, it's going to be a lot more where you want to tap into that thing.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, it's get on, get on a ship and sail or, you know.
You either pay now or pay later.
And, and that needs to all be addressed, and yes, the public needs to know that and citizens of this side of town need to know what the money's being spent on, if it's, what's being spent on, regardless if it's not coming out of citizens' pockets, it's still, you just all need to know that.
I've got two lots and I'd like to have two, I'd like to have it where I could build something on the other lot and go, go right in.
You know, you got a good piece of property there.
It's going to make nine tenths of an acre, it's going to increase the value of my property.
Right, that's completely high dollar property before it's all over.
I might build me some kind of a restaurant up there.
I would have, I would have that as my.
I know, I like.
You're going to have to get earthquake insurance before you blast it in down.
Ted's Pancake House.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll be here.
And I got, I.
I'll be here.
Any other board members have any questions, comments?
Now, I, I like the idea of having a, you know, maybe a town hall meeting about the issue.
Well, I don't think we want to keep waiting forever, though.
I, I think it'd be nice to have. What's, what's your name, ma'am? I don't know.
Cheryl Cameron.
I'm sorry.
Cheryl Cameron. I'm next door to Ted and next door to Louanne.
Okay.
One on each side.
Between the three of you, you could probably peruse all those people that are around you and find out what they want to do.
Now, I'm kind of limited at this point, maybe if you give phone numbers, I could do it.
Sure.
We, we, we all talk about it, it's just that like as what Spence said tonight, there are so many different stories that happen this way, that way. You have to come to the city, you don't have to enter the city, you have to pay twice as much. We don't even get our water from the city. We're on a completely different water system, or some people are on their own wells.
Yeah.
So, does that get considered in? Oh, because how, how do you make a, a determination depending on, I understand the sewer system, but the sewer system needs water. We don't use your water.
Well, most, most people out there, don't they, get it from?
PWSD number seven.
Yeah, Public Water District number seven or something like that.
I'm on the board, so yeah.
So, I mean, it's.
So there, there's a lot of factors that need to be addressed so that everybody knows exactly what they're facing. Because we're all in the dark as to what is going on. And, and in my mind, we're being expected to let all of you decide what we're going to have to do.
And none of you have been voted in by any of us. It's not that we have anything against any of you, we say, but I don't like decisions made for me about my property and I get to know everything after the fact or as it's finishing up.
Well, believe it or not, we're trying to write a new chapter in the book, okay?
Right, go on.
Regardless of you vote for us or not.
Right. I, I have.
This would need to be a discussion.
I have my own well, I don't pay for water. I have, I said that I don't pay for sewer. Maybe they could condemn me, I don't know, I'm fine, I'm back. I don't want to hurt my neighbors who have less fortunate to lay their property, but again, I'd like to know what my benefits are going to exceed to, because if I'm giving up my water and I'm, I'm paying for sewer and then I have to pay another place for water, it kind of feels like I'm getting hit a few more times than somebody else. But maybe it'll work out, I don't know all the factors yet as far as costs and having your little tax sheet may help me.
We don't need to, we're trying to get that together for you.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Dave, you got anything for Ms. Williams?
Um, no, I don't thank you.
Harlan? Dave?
Getting close on the caboose.
It looks real nice. Uh, maybe, Elton? Maybe it'd be nice that if the city could look into replacing the one light fixture down by the caboose. It shines forward straight out towards the concrete pad instead of towards the caboose and it's also smaller than the light that's shining on the flagpole down there, so maybe. I gave Marilyn the, the number off the pole, I'm thinking it's number one thirteen, but anyway, it's got a square light, it doesn't sh- shine lots of light out at night. Quite honestly, if you're not right in front of it, you don't, you don't get much light off of it, so, and I'm sure we're paying a pretty good dime for that light fixture anyway.
Well, we need to have a guard, have a guard on it that rocks won't break the glass or whatever on it. Because the one that's right behind the caboose is not working anymore because of that.
Okay. Also, reminder to all the citizens that are here, that starting Monday, the next phase of Main Street project will start and Main Street will be closed right in front of the, between the two entrances going into the school. So to, to get to the school, parents will have to come off of Z Highway. Main Street will be one-way only going towards the school. You'll have to turn in the far north entrance to the school, go through and drop your children off and then exit the south end and continue down Main Street that way. But this is starting Monday, the twenty-ninth. Pardon me? Yes, it's also on the door out front. Nothing else? Okay.
Keep your stuff, keep your stuff, because I'll just add food for Monday. We're not reproducing everybody.
Okay, we'll close this workshop and we'll open the tax hearing in twenty-five minutes.